Notes, but Chaplain Durham is going to deliver the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with him.
Let's praise together. Father God, we thank you for this time that you've given us, as we know that all time is in your hands. We thank you for the leadership of our county and we thank you that, as we meet today, that you are in charge. And we pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, you give them guidance as they make decisions, as they present the budget and all the other factors that happened tonight. And we just ask for your presence to be among us, and we ask that your will will be done in all of our lives, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to everyone for attending the May 15, 2018 budget hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to provide citizen input in the county's proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Ramona Bivens, CFO, will be providing the proposed FY 2019 annual operating budget, followed by questions and comments from the Board, and then questions and comments from the public. Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner. This evening I will be presenting the proposed FY 19 annual budget. The, in accordance with the state statute, the Board is required to adopt an annual budget each year. When we adopt the budget, we adopt the total budget, which consists of six funds. The general operating fund, which is the largest of all funds, this is where the county budgets and accounts for the primary day-to-day operations. Our primary revenue source is property taxes, along with sales taxes, fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits, and some interest earnings. Our special revenue fund, these are proceeds that are specific revenue sources that can only be used for specific purposes, they're legally restricted. This is where our file fund is in the special revenue fund, the hotel motel tax, the federal and state narcotics funds, the HUD funds, E-911 are those types of special revenue funds. The capital projects fund is where we account for construction or acquisition of all of our fixed assets, excuse me. The revenue source, our main revenue source is our sponsor revenue and some interest earnings, and this is where we record all of our land purchases, our parks and recreation facilities, building constructions, roads, sidewalks, and bridges. These funds cannot be used for day-to-day operations of the county. We have our debt service fund, which is where we pay principal and interest on long-term debts, any bonds that we have. The internal service fund is for operations serving other funds or departments. Our medical self-insurance and workers' compensation fund, we're following that category. And then we have the enterprise fund. These, this is where we account for services provided to the public on a user charge such as our landfill. I want to give you a little update on the local economic conditions and outlook for the county. This information was provided by the Economic Development Office. We've had 426 new jobs and $107 million in new investments due to expansion by local companies. Fifty-three existing businesses over the next 12 months will be making new investments of an estimated $26 million with an additional 545 jobs. The labor, the workforce has increased about 3% over the past year to 135,000, while our unemployment rate has dropped 16% to 5.2% as of March, according to Georgia DOL statistics. Also, this is lower than our pre-recession unemployment rate. Retail sales in the county are now at $3.9 billion and are continuing to grow. And MARTA has helped to attract companies and retain some of the companies in the county because it has allowed people to, mode of transportation to get to work. This graph just shows the unemployment rate. As you can see, as I stated earlier, in 2006, pre-recession, it was 5.9%. And you can see, in the middle of recession in 2010 and '11, it was above 13%. And since 2012, it has continued to decline to the current rate of 5.2%. Although our residential values are continuing to increase, we are still having revenue challenges. Many of you, you are aware of the FAA regulations regarding the sales tax on jet fuel. With still some uncertainty on that, no decision has really been made on when that's going to happen. We got a reprieve from it, from the $2.5 million for this current fiscal year. For FY 19, it's estimated to be about $6 million. That is not reflected in the budget because if, at any time in the future, we do have to pay it, our reserves is at a level where we could weather that if we needed to. In addition, Governor Deal's budget that was approved included funding to make Clayton County whole if the FAA ever were to take that funding from us. Also, there's state legislation that's been in place for a few years, HB 212, that is diverting TAVT, the Avalon Tax on Vehicles, to MARTA. In 2015, we received $2.6 million in that tax. And as you can see on the slide, it has decreased over the last few years. In 2016, it was at $1.4 million, down to, down to $200,000 last year. And as of today, we have not received any of that funding. We're proposing to maintain the same level of funding as the current fiscal year from the original budget for FY 18. We've included $1.1 million in enhancements, and all of these enhancements address the six pillars in the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. The majority of revenue is derived from property taxes. Back in the, during, when the recession started, property values were, dropped significantly. In 2009, the, not property values, the average sales price dropped from $99,000 in 2009 to $45,000 in 2012. We started seeing some increase in 2014. Each year, we've experienced some increase in the average sales price. So, as of now, in March of this year, we're up to $120,831, which is higher than it was in 2009. And this is information that I've received from the Tax Assessment's Office. This shows our tax digest history over the last few years. In 2010, which is not on here, we had a significant decrease in property values at that time, and we lost about $13.2 million in revenue due to that. We continue to see decreases through 2014, finally seeing increases in 2015. That was primarily due to re-evaluation of residential properties in 2015 by the Assessment's Office, and that was the first one that had been done in several year, years, as well as improving housing market. Values have continued to create, increase over the last two years. This year, we experienced a 10% increase in the gross property values. We're at $8 billion compared to 7.3 last year. And as a result of this increase, this proposed budget, I have a recommendation to lower the gross mileage rate by 1.014 mils, which will result in a one-mil decrease to the net mileage rate after applying the loss credit. So, we will go from the 15.596, I'm sorry, 956 from last year, 16956 to 15 for this year, 15956 for this year. This shows our property tax trends. This summarizes the, some of the property tax data for the most recent year periods, and the assumptions for tax year for 2018, which is for fiscal year 19. And all of our tax information is based on the April 5 preliminary digest that we receive from the Tax Assessment's Office. And I will get, I will tell you later towards the end of the presentation on any impacts and any changes may have on the budget. So, as you can see, that we're not quite back to our pre-recession net property values. They were at 8.4 million in 2007, and 8.6 in 2008. This year, again, they're $7 million. And the mileage rate has remained the same. The last two years, we kept the same net mileage rate. And again, we're proposing to decrease the net mileage rate by a mil. The tax, the digest that we have for 17 and 18, this is a comparison. You can see, last year, the net assessed value was 6.3, this year it's 7.5. The base mileage was 21.924. We're recommending to reduce it to 20.910. Our sales tax credit this year is 5.314 compared to 5.328. It had a slight decrease, but there are two things that impact the loss credit. It's the sales tax collected, as well as the property values. So, this credit would increase if the loss, when the loss collections increase and the property values remain the same, you would have a higher credit. However, when both increase, the credit decreases as well. So, that's kind of what we have this year. The property values increased, as well as an increase in the loss credit. So, it, the loss credit went down by, from 5.314 to 5.328. And with that, it would give us a net mileage of 15.596. The gross property tax level would be 109 million, and we're estimating a net collected of 104. As I mentioned earlier about the property taxes, the changes, the notices were mailed for personal property on May 11, but for residential and everything else, it was mailed on April the 30th, I'm sorry, April 20. The deadline is June 4 for those notices that went out on April the 20th for people to appeal the values, and June 25 for those personal property notices that were mailed on May the 11. Changes in the digest, as I stated earlier, would can impact the revenue. If the digest increases, that is a positive effect, it would increase the revenues. If it decreases, it would have a negative impact where the revenues would decrease. Our proposed general fund budget with the revenue is based on the April 5 preliminary digest. We're projecting to have a beginning fund balance on July 1 of 18 of $59.3 million. Our revenues at $199.1 million, with expenses at $202.6 million. That is $3.5 million over our revenues. We're proposing to use a one-time use of fund balance of $3.5 million for fleet purchases and for some building and maintenance repairs, to be a one-time use of those funds. That would leave us with a projected ending fund balance on June 30 for next year of $55.8 million. This shows our revenues by source. As I stated earlier, our total revenues is $199.1 million. When we add the $3.5 million one-time use of fund balance to the revenues, we would have a grand total of $202.6 million. More than 50% of that revenue is derived from property taxes. And then other taxes and assessments is the next largest source, and this is where we record our sales taxes that we received, and other taxes. The remaining revenue is generated from charges for services, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue, fines and forfeitures. This year, the fines and forfeitures is lower than the previous few years due to lower fines as a result of pre-trial intervention activities. Next, I want to talk about our expenditures. I'm going to have three different slides on expenditures. This one is expenditures by type. Again, our expenditures are $202.6 million. Of that, 66% of that is in personnel services. As with most organizations, it's at 67% to 72% of expenditures are in the human capital area. Our operating expenses is our next largest expenditure at 29.5% of our total expenditures. And then our other financing uses, that includes transfers to other funds, where we have matched for special revenue funds, the landfill, and the retiree medical funds. This slide shows the expenditures by category. Excuse me. As you can see on this one, as in previous years, courts and law enforcement and public safety, those are where the majority of the expenses are, with 34.7% for the courts and law enforcement, and 24.7% at public safety. The other general government and general government are the next largest expenditures, and then we have the parks and recreation, tax assessment collections, health and welfare, libraries, and all the other areas of expenses, services that we provide in the county. This proposed budget, as I stated earlier, includes the same level of funding as the original FY 2018 budget. We have continued the strategic initiatives that we started two years ago with vehicle replacement and building and maintenance, infusing one-time funds from our fund balance. So, that's the $3.5 million that I discussed earlier, where our revenues exceeded the, I'm sorry, our expenditures exceeded the revenues. We have $1.1 million in enhancements from various departments, building and maintenance, fleet, police department for code enforcement, elections office, communications and marketing, central services, parks and recreation, prison, and the library are areas that we have infused some additional money into for this next fiscal year. And these enhancements were included as they address the six pillars in the Commissioners' strategic plan. We've also included $3 million for pay enhancements. One, we've discussed a merit increase through the performance evaluation plan, reinstituting that. There hasn't been a merit increase in over 10 years, I believe, if not longer. And if that, if the Board chooses to go that route, or they can, we can also, they can also look at a COLA if they want that, and that would be about 2.7% increase if you chose that route. So, summary, the general fund proposed budget, again, projected fund balance, the beginning of the fiscal year is 59.3. Our revenues, $199.1 million. Our expenses at a $202.6 million. We will be using 3.5 million of our fund balance one-time use for those items that I discussed earlier for fleet and building and maintenance, with the projected ending fund balance of $55.8 million. And that says 63018, that should say 63019. On the proposed budget, as I stated at the beginning of the presentation, the Board would have to adopt a budget for all six funds. And this slide shows the, all of these funds with the total budget for each fund. The total of all funds would be $332,8152, with the majority of that being in the general operating fund. 61% of that is in that fund. Good business practice dictates having a minimum of one month's operating expense and reserves. However, our practice has been to have three months. Our current average monthly expenditure is at $16 million. So, at three months, that would be $48 million. As I stated earlier, we're projected to end this year with 59.3, so we're a little above that. And then in order to add any additional items to the proposed budget, if you would like to make any additions to this without taking out anything, we would have to find some additional revenue to offset those increase in expenditures. It would be through, one way could be through growth in the digest. If the digest increases, it would generate additional tax dollars, or we would have to increase the mileage rate. We could reallocate items in the current budget. We would reduce in some areas and reallocate those existing funds to somewhere else. Or we could use reserves. Again, I strongly urge you to use it for those one-time uses only, because if we use it for recurring expenditures, we would have to look for that money next year to make that up. Just a recap of the budget calendar. The budget was published last Tuesday on the 8th. Today is our public hearing, and I would hope to, that we can have a budget adoption on the, at the June 5 meeting, during our regular Board meeting. The mileage rate hearings, if needed, would be in July. The Tax Assessor has advised that it's going to, the lockdown digest is going to be a little later than it has been. We normally get it close mid to late June, and we can set our dates, but it will be the first part of July this year when we receive that, and tend to have a mileage rate adoption in late July. That's all I have for, on the proposed budget, and I open the floor for any comments or questions that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from Board members? All right, I have a question. Let's go back to the employee enhancement.
Okay.
All right, I believe unless you pull the slide back up there.
I will, hold on.
The discussion was centered around 2.7% raise COLA versus a merit increase.
Yes.
Now, merit increase would be based on the performance evaluation.
That is correct.
And it would be given to an employee sometime throughout the year, whenever they're, whatever they-
On their anniversary date.
They are evaluated.
Yes.
That's my train of thought. Okay, so, what percentage of a raise would they get?
So, I think that each step is like 1.25. So, it would start there, and we could cap it at five, but we're still calculating the median and the ranges.
You say you can have it to five.
We can cap it. So, it's 1.25. So, you do one step, two steps, and 1.25 increments.
So, the money that was budgeted, if everybody got 5%?
Well, everybody shouldn't get 5%.
They shouldn't, but I'm just being the devil's advocate, then that money, there's not enough money budgeted for that.
No, so, what we, what we could do is allocate an allotment to each department based on their payroll size, their percentage of their payroll to the, to the total payroll for the county, and they would have that amount of money to issue out in merit increases. So, they couldn't give everybody 5%, or they would run out of money.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I was just being the devil's advocate on that.
Right, okay.
And I know that this is just a budget hearing, so I'm just going to state my, my desire in terms of, when it comes to our employees. And that is that I believe that the employee should get a 3% COLA upfront. And then we start, reinstate the performance evaluation method the following year. But our employees have been subjected to increased insurance premiums, and it's even, probably going to go up this year. So, we always, we always say, say again?
I believe there, and Ms. Amos can confirm, I believe it did go up about 3, 2.5 to 3%?
Yeah, but neither here nor there, we know it's going to go up because they always do every year. But my point here is, we always say, our employees are most valuable assets. We need to start acting like that. They need relief now. 3% isn't much, but it's better than them waiting, especially those in later, later months, May, June, April, who would have to wait then to get their evaluation, and then possibly only get 1.25%. That's creating, in my opinion, more of a hardship on our employees, and they need some relief. So, it would be my recommendation that we go with the COLA of 3% instead of 2.7% and reinstitute the PEP the following year. And like I said, I know this is a hearing, and that's my two cents worth on that.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other statements or comments from the Board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Bivens, going back to the tax digest, I was reading through this earlier today, and looking at the net mileage rates over the last decade, it seems like we are getting better. We are at the low gross mil, but we're not at the low net mil. What would like a two-mil reduction, net mil reduction do? Where would that money come from? Would that-
So, if we were to reduce-
General fund?
If we, for the general fund, if we were to reduce it by another mil, that's about $7 million, we would have to either reduce our expenditures or go into our reserves to make up that difference. And that would put us below the comfort level where we would really like to keep our reserves right now.
And that's the 16 million a month times three months?
It's at 48, yes.
Okay.
And I was going to say, I would like to keep our reserves at a comfortable level, which is what you were just saying. So, I agree with you.
What is a comfortable level?
We, we like, we, our practice is to maintain at the, at the, three years, three years, three months-
Three months.
Of operating reserves. That's $48 million right now, but you don't want to just get it down to 48 because things happen. We just had some litigation that we had to pay out of the fund balance, but we think, we're thinking that our revenue has come in really well this year, so it may offset that. We may not even have to use that designation or assignment to fund balance that the Board approved that we brought to the Board. Also, buildings, things break down. And if we have to have an emergency repair, or if we had a catastrophic event that came along, we wouldn't want to get below that 48 million. We still want to keep it above that range and give ourselves some cushion-
Right, give yourself-
To have some emergency funds, yes.
So-
Back to savings account.
So, what's the projected general fund balance?
59, this year, but it'd be 55 at the end of fiscal year next year, be 55. Because we're infusing that 3.5 million for those-
Okay, so 55. So, what is the difference between 2.75 and 3%?
$800,000.
$800,000, so less than a million. So, we're talking 54 if we go to 3%.
But keep in mind, anytime you use fund balance for recurring expenditures, you're going to have to make that up in next year. So, if we were to use that $800,000 to get to that 3%, we're going to have to find revenue of $800,000 to maintain that for the next years going forward.
And you say the sales, collections, property tax collections are on the way up?
Well, they have been for this year. I can't speak to next year.
Well, there's always opportunity or a likelihood that it will continue on the, let's think positive.
That is my hope.
Let's think positive, and let's also think, and on behalf of our employees that are so deserving of being treated better, okay?
If it does, then we could do that.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'll say that when we discuss the merit as opposed to the COLA.
I have another question. We've, we've got half an hour, right?
Well, the public, we have to leave some time for the public to speak.
Well, not on your presentation, but on the, in the blue book on page 3, it's talking about, I'm not putting you on the floor. I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure. When it talks about personnel expenses in the fiscal year 2019, the very last paragraph on page 3, it talks about the $3 million for either merit increases or the COLAs the Chairman's talking about. But it also talks about various increases approved at the state level for elected officials at a cost of .4 million, the last of a three-phase increase. Is that the, the judges' pay raises that the delegation did?
Yes, it is.
That's what that is. And then what is the three-phase-in increases to address pay parity?
So, three years ago, I believe, there was a previous COO for Mr. Stanford did a, had the HR department do a salary study on the management positions, and to-
Assistant directors and above?
Assistant director, but that is correct. And this is the last, we did it in phases, a phase-in instead of doing it all at once. And this is the last of that phase-in.
Okay.
To make that whole.
Are we doing any other parity increases for any departments or offices right now?
I don't, they're not parity, no, we're not doing any parity increases.
We're doing a compensation.
We're doing a compensation study right now, which you all should be getting, then I believe, in late June. And we're going to look at how we can address that at mid-year budget maybe next year, because I know there are going to be some increases that will need to happen. So, again, I'm being optimistic, as you were saying earlier, that digest that we're going to get, our Tax Assessor has said that he doesn't anticipate any decreases or any significant decreases. It will probably, more than likely, increase, not sure. But if it does, we would anticipate being able to have those additional funds to address the increases that will be needed from that compensation study.
And is that study also covering the constitutional offices, or is it just the county departments?
I think it, believe, and Ms. Amos, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it did involve the constitutional offices as well. Is that correct? He asked if the compensation study included the constitutional offices, and I thought, I thought it did. Okay. And so, it includes them and part-time employees, yes.
All right. So, any, any adjustments to pay or parity based on the results of that compensation study would be a mid-year budget amendment like any others. It could happen in June, but it'd be after the adoption of this.
That is correct. And it would be those that, and the Board would prioritize how we implement that study, how we implement those phases as well. We could do it, there's several different ways to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Nope, I think that's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, public comment.
Lisa Anderson.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say-
I'm nervous.
Hold on a second before you speak.
Commissar's still going to be reserved for the three-minute maximum time limit.
It's my understanding that within this proposed budget, there is a proposal to have the state court reporters become salary employees, and that has not been mentioned. I was coming to oppose it, but I didn't know if that is-
That's in the meeting after this one that starts at 7:00.
Oh, so I can sit down and then reserve and talk then?
You can talk both times. Talk both times if you want. You got a, you got a soapbox.
Oh, okay. Well, I've been in Clayton County State Court for 20-plus years, and the salary that they are just proposing is very low. It's not at all comparable to other counties or Superior Court. Superior Courts projected, or they make 56, and they're talking like 42,000 or 41,000 for state court. And the 46,000 in state court, they also have a typist that does their typing for them, and that typist makes $30,000. So, that's a big discrepancy in what they're being paid and given versus what we would be getting paid and given. And I just think that it's either being rushed, or it's not being fully thought through as far as, as all of that. I mean, I have it all written down here, but I guess I can save all that for, maybe then I won't be as nervous as I am now.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Uh, yes.
Did you fill out your compensation study survey?
No, they haven't- No, they have this as independent contractors, and I wasn't invited, so I didn't get to do that. So I don't know how that will affect that particular.
Ms. Anderson, if, if I can, the way I understand it, and tell me where I'm wrong, is that right now a state court reporter is paid on an hourly or per diem based on, uh, as an independent contractor. So if the court calendar is such that there isn't anything to do, you can go elsewhere and do other business.
And make money elsewhere.
And make money elsewhere. In this proposal, you'd be a non-exempt salaried employee that would be required to sit there from nine to five whether there was anything to do or not.
Correct, and not do any outside work and not get paid for transcripts for indigent defendants.
So how much does that cost the county to have you on a flat salary versus coming in on demand when we're using you versus just sitting there? Do you understand? I mean, like, how much do you, I don't know if it's a personal question. Is forty-five thousand more than you make or less than you make in, in that particular court now? Or you're making more, but you lose the outside work? Or you're making a lot less than you make now? Trying to figure out what it costs me.
Well, it would be, uh, what it will cost you, I don't know. I know in, I, my, um, my per diem, it also includes transcripts and the ability in civil and that kind of stuff. So I don't know, um, the, the initial amount of saying forty-two thousand dollars is less than what you're paying me now. But apparently, you know, the, it, it's less, it's a pay cut for me. And then I would have no other means to make, to try to increase that because I won't be allowed to do outside work.
So if it's not coming from you, who's this request coming from? I mean, are you being court reporters or are you just a lone center and court reporter? I think all of them.
No, apparently it's the court administrator, the court administration and maybe the senior chief state court judge.
Okay.
That are trying to, to do it and.
And why? What's, what's the rationale, I'm not, what, what?
I don't know. We, the majority of us don't want it. We've never been asked if we wanted it.
Okay.
I mean, because if you, we get a two hundred dollar per diem, and if you do that five days a week, four, four weeks, fifty-two weeks a year, I mean, you know, it's, it should be fifty-two thousand dollars to compensate for the per diem. And it's, and it's nowhere near that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, make sure you sign up again at the regular meeting at seven.
Okay.
Anna Pavon?
I guess I'll reserve for the next.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that concludes our public comment section. And I believe that concludes our, uh, our budget hearing for this afternoon. So is there a motion to adjourn? I'll second those if they're right.
All right.
I oppose. All right, see unanimous. All right.